Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have one addition, 7O, approve the SCDP agreement for Sprinkle of Joy. Is there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, the March 17th, 2021 meeting, all receive them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2021 meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon.
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? We do have a public hearing tonight, so that will be separate from this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is closed, we'll then move on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing before us this evening regarding the proposed 2021 improvement, Angel Drive and East Street, Sinclair Lewis Avenue to 6th Street. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak, please sign in on the signup sheet at the back of the room. Procedure is as follows. Presentation by staff followed by questions of staff, then we receive public input. Raise your hand, when recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we will hear questions for clarification, then secondly, favor, public in favor or against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless the majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session.
Okay, I just have a very brief presentation, so you're gonna have to turn around to see it, but this is for anybody that's interested. As you know, this is the public hearing for Angel Drive and East Street. The city council called for this public hearing by resolution at a prior meeting. And I just messed up. It's been sitting there too long. Let's do this. Okay. So there we go. So what the outline is, is we're gonna upgrade East Street and from Sinclair Lewis Avenue to 6th, and also Angel Drive, including the cul-de-sac. So if you hear from one of those areas, these are the streets that we're talking about. This is a full-depth reclamation along with some minor curb repairs, full-depth reclamation. We find that to be appropriate when the base and underground utilities don't need major repairs, and it removes the asphalt, grinds it up, leaves it in place as a base for the new asphalt over the top. So that is really what is gonna happen for those streets as proposed. These are some actual pictures that Ben actually took out on the roadway. As you can see, we have a lot of alligator cracking, it's a delamination and what is occurring, but we have determined along with the public utility that it doesn't warrant a full-depth reclamation. A few years ago, we actually looked at a seal code, but determined that it was too far gone for that. Get a few more years out of it and then do this process instead. So that's why we're here tonight. This is the work area map, you had that in your packet. Just that three blocks of East Street and then Angel Drive. Everybody's familiar with it, and everybody received notice actually out from any of those budding worlds. The cost of the project is estimated at $177,000. This was based upon recent bids received for other projects on a tonnage basis. If we proceed with that project, we will have to get sealed bids, and then the council would review those bids in a future date and award them if appropriate. We get to the assessment part, which is everybody's most interested in. Our city policy calls for an assessment of 35%, and the city pays the other 65%. The assessed costs, which is estimated at $62,000, which is 35% of the total cost, are assessed to the property owners on a front-footage basis. Of course, we do have a lot of corner lots and odd-shaped lots in this project. There are adjustments made for that. Our special assessment policy actually outlines how we do that. The average assessment for East Street is $1,015, and the average assessment for Angel Drive is $13,81. And when I say average, some are more and some are less. And then we do have a two-year payment period with interest with property tax, so you can pay it in fuller part by November 15th to avoid interest costs. So it's kind of about what they're looking like, and this is not an annual, this is the total assessment for it. Some people had called me wondering if this was an annual for how many years, and this is the total cost, and they can choose whether they want to pay it in either two years. The timeline, tonight we're having the public hearing. If the council can, if they have a resolution, they can order the improvement and solicit bids if they decide. We see even open bids on April 29th, and then on May 5th, they'll be back in front of the council. And if you choose to award the bid, we'll work in May to get the contracts executed. June through August is project, we haven't set the date for that project yet, simply because depending on the contractor, they might want to have other projects in the area. We might get a better bid if we're able to do it in conjunction with another project. And then sometime in September, we'll have the final assessment hearing to let everybody know specifically what their final assessment actually is, because these are based on estimates. And that is the total that I have for that, so you can go back to your public hearing.
Okay, does counsel have any questions, what Vicki reviewed? Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak for clarification in favor or against the project? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor, against, or needs clarification? Okay, will you come to the podium and state your name and... State your name and address, please?
Jerry Coleman, 24 Angel Drive. And I just got a question. I'm for the project, that's not the problem. But a snowball took out a chunk of our curb a number of years ago, and I came to City Hall and asked if they were gonna fix it, well, they said up at the front office, they thought they would, they'd send somebody over. Well, no one ever came. Now that it came to this and we're gonna fix, maybe fix Angel Drive, I think it'd be a good time to fix that curb and gut it, and I wonder who's, our curb, and who's liable for that?
Okay. I think, Ben, do you know where that chunk of curb is, or...?
Yes, I do. So it's about 28 lineal feet, and what happened was it was an old approach that they just filled the concrete over the top of it to fill that void and create the curb. But we did include it in this project to be repaired. That's the only chunk of curb on Angel Drive that needs to be removed and replaced for this project, so we're including it in the project.
Okay, so...
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, one more time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor, against, or needs clarification on the project for East Street and/or Angel Drive? Any other questions, last minute questions from the council? Okay. Then our public hearing is now closed, we'll recess or go back into our regular council meeting. Reports and presentations, park board report.
Okay, the park board met Tuesday, April 6th, that was last night, they had a pretty full agenda. Some of the things that they have on there is they talked about an annual table replacement plan for the arena. The ta, or can you turn on, switch that light switch on? And they recommend that we develop that arena replacement plan. And then also they have, are recommending the arena seasonal starting pay rate be advanced, simply because we're having trouble getting people to want to take three or four hours out of their evening to come up and work, so when we start this fall, we'll be going to the council with a different pay rate for starting at the arena. They're recommending council authorize bids for the mower replacement. They have some updates in your packet for the 2022 campground rates, because you'll start reserving 2022 in May of 2021. They do have some updates recommended for the arena dry floor deposit and nonprofit rate. They are recommending the bids for the day-use dock and the Challenge Park concrete bids. On the master plan, they tabled that update, and they're recommending we look at a budget item for 2022 to have professional services for that project. They had members from the ballfield committee here to talk about the tower fuel ballfield plans. And then also, we are continuing to talk about the compressors at the arena and how those can be replaced. And they're also looking at perhaps an arena study to be done to determine future needs, so we're not piecemealing in that we have a full picture of what we're expecting to cost up there in the coming years, and so we're looking at finding somebody to do that. Also, at the splash pad, they have those spray cannons, looking to replace those. And then they reviewed the final shelter restroom layout of the campground, and that is on your agenda tonight for approval. So they had a pretty full agenda last night, probably one of the longest meetings they've had, so our new members got their initiation.
Any questions? EDA report?
We had, the EDA met today, April 7th. We did receive an update on the info center property development, which you will receive tonight. They did receive and respond to an inquiry on the 1598 property that we're currently under development, so now we have an offer, so we're trying to weigh those two items. They're recommending proceeding with the public hearing for TIF 1-14, you're calling that hearing tonight. And also, they reviewed the SCDP loan for Sprinkle of Joy, that was the added agenda item tonight. It wasn't on the agenda, because we were waiting final numbers, which we did receive. And then also, the former Hartland Gallery building, we're working with them as well on some updates with the SCDP loan, and that'll be coming to, at a future meeting, if we end up putting that one together. So you have a couple items on the agenda tonight.
Okay, questions? All right, we'll move on to action items. 7A, approve resolution 2021-24, ordering improvement of Angel and East.
So this is the agenda item that actually would order the improvement and advertise for the bids for the project. You actually had an updated resolution on your thing tonight, because the wrong one got pulled into the packet. If you do adopt that, we will go ahead and get the contracts ready and get the advertisement in the bids, or advertisement for bid out there, and of course, then you'll see that again on May 5th to talk about whether we're gonna finally do the project. So what we're looking tonight is to approve resolution 2021-24, ordering the improvement and advertising the bids for the 2021 street improvement project.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-24, ordering the improvement of Angel Drive and East Street as proposed?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. One question that I've got is, if any, is there anybody out there that might have to have, like, new service run to their house, or anything like that? Would that be good to have that done before we...?
That's a good question. We should, perhaps what I will do is I'll send a notice out to everybody, if we award the project, of course, in that, saying that when the, when it's expected to be done, and if they're anticipating any service work, they should get it done before then. That's a good idea, though, to ask that question.
To me, I was just, it's just, you know, why do it and then have someone come along and say, "Let's dig in a hole in it right away," because we should have put in a new service line, or something's wrong with theirs, and if there's a chance that could be done. I don't know how much settling there would be, maybe, you know, that's...
We prefer not to cut into the street after it's, when it's new, so...
Right, so I was just...
I wouldn't anticipate a lot on Angel Drive, because those are like the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s.
Most of that's barely new.
But East Street, we could get it, we could find anything. So we'll send out a notice to all of them, and just ask that question.
Just think forward a little bit, is what I was, so...
It would save my $2,000 fee to open the street.
Well, plus then you don't have a new street that's been...
Tore up.
Well, have a hole in the middle of it right away, so...
True.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2021-24. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7B, approve resolution 2021-25, joint powers agreement.
This is the, the city is part of a joint powers agreement that includes the state of Minnesota, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, Stearns County Attorney's Office, and the City of Sock Center and their police department. What this agreement does is allow the city's police and the Stearns County Attorney on behalf of our police department and the city to utilize that BCA website and their tools in conducting their duties. We do have a current agreement, this is the updated agreement, because our current one is up for renewal. And I did put both the joint powers agreement with the state and the county in your packet for your review, and then of course, we have resolution 2021-25, authorizing the execution of that agreement. I don't know if you have any questions on what this allows them to do, but...
Is there any questions? The resolution on the page says 21-27, it should be...
It's 30, it's 25.
Okay.
On page 32.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or concerns? After you've looked through it? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-25, authorizing the execution of the joint powers agreement? Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7C, accept retirement resignation, Public Works employee.
Okay, so we do have this letter that we received from Bill Burke. Says, "After much consideration, I've decided to submit my resignation for my position within Public Works. My time with the City of Sock Center has been very enjoyable. However, after 27 years in this industry, it is time for me to retire. I'm looking forward to the years ahead by making, by working on my property, helping my wife with her business, and most importantly, spending time with my family. My last day at the City of Sock Center will be April 29th, 2021. I wish the city and all of its employees success in the coming years." So Billy has been with us, as he said, for 27 years. He also started here in the arena and was the arena manager for many, many years, so he had a lot of knowledge about the arena before he transitioned solely into the Public Works, street and parks. So we certainly wish him well, but I'm looking for you to accept his retirement, of Bill Burke, from the Public Works Department, effective April 29th, 2021.
Comments? Otherwise, do I have a motion to accept the retirement slash resignation of Bill Burke from the Public Works Department?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7D, authorize advertisement for full-time Public Works position.
So with this Public Works resignation, we now have an available position. In 2020, just over a year ago, we advertised for an open position, and we selected an individual for hire. And at that time, the remaining candidates were ranked and placed on a hiring list for upcoming appointments. But because that list is now over a year old, the city may want to re-advertise this position and also ask those that applied before if they're still interested, if they want to reapply. This will not only give the prior candidates the opportunity to refresh their applications, it will also open it up to other potential candidates that may not have had opportunity to apply a year ago. I did put a potential timeline, and this is always a little optimistic on my part, but I think if we advertise the position, April 8th to the 22nd, accept the applications up to the 31st or 30th, and then review the applications that first week of May, and then try to get those interviews somewhere between the 10th and the 18th, so that on May 19th, the council can have an appointment. This is quite rapid, because it takes a while to get interviews set up and get all that arranged. So I would say either the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June, we should be able to have an appointment in front of the council. So what we're looking tonight is to authorize the proceeding with the hiring process, either with going to the list or opening it up for re-advertising.
Okay, questions, comments? Does the council want to go through, have us go through the application and interview process, or should we go back to the list? Vicki does make a valid point that it's over a year old, that list, so we're not certain if that list is current or if they would want, so...
I think with everything that's happened over the last year, people's positions have changed within their own working environment that might open up a whole new variety of people with backgrounds.
I agree.
Okay. Do you want a motion or second, or is just general consensus?
General consent is fine.
Okay, general consensus, just to proceed? Okay, that's what we will do. 7E, approve resolution 2021-26, calling for hearing on vacation of a part of Getty Street.
Right, so with the relocation of Getty Street, this is the south-south one, which would be south of 12th Street. We relocated that further to the west. The property along the east side of Getty Street, adjacent to the information center, is now considered excess property. And so the new proposed plat of Aerosmith Plat 3, which is the information center property, we propose to include that excess right away in the plat. So I did include a copy in your packet, you can see that. And in order to do that, we would need to vacate that easement. So that is in your packet as a resolution 2021-26, vacating, calling the hearing to vacate a part of Getty Street, and that would be held on May 5th.
Questions, comments? Everyone knows what, where we're talking about? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-26?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Joel. Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7F, approve resolution 2021-27, calling for hearing on vacation of utility easements.
This is very similar, and that map is also in your packet, but the existing plat of Aerosmith Plat 2 has a 10-foot utility easement around the entire perimeter. Need to vacate that, eliminate that, and then, once the properties are added together, we'll have a new easement dedicated in the new plat. So this is looking to approve resolution 2021-27, calling for a hearing on vacating the easement. So we had the vacating of the property and the vacating of the easement, which will hold concurrently.
Okay. Questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-27?
Motion.
Motion by Sheldon.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7G, approve resolution 2021-28, authorizing quotes for day-use dock finger extensions.
Right, with, we did, as you know, we had ordered a new dock for the day-use dock that was funds that were collected through donations. We now have additional funding that has come in through donations, and the park board is recommending that the city council authorize advertisement for quotes to purchase two dock extensions, so basically, we make it into a T. $5,000 has been received from the Conservation Club and Big South Lake Association for this purpose. So we're looking to approve resolution 2021-28, authorizing the solicitation of quotes for these dock extensions.
Questions, comments?
Great idea, I love it.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-28?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7H, approve resolution 2021-29, authorizing quotes for mower.
The park budget this year includes the purchase of a mower to replace our Ferris zero-turn mower. The proposal is to replace the mower with a similar zero-turn. So $20,000 has been budgeted, and as always, we retain the option to keep the Ferris as a backup mower, and we would make that determination after bid opening, depending on the trade-off, or you may want to opt to sell it outright at that point, we just want to keep that option open. So what we're looking tonight to do is just resolution 2021-29, authorizing the solicitation of quotes for this mower.
Comments, questions?
I just had a question regarding that $20,000, and I don't remember if this was discussed at budget time, but was that taking into consideration a trade or an outright sale of the current mower?
We had, that one was just a purchase.
Okay.
So we, if we, sometimes when we get these older mowers like that and we trade them in, sometimes they only give you $1,000 and it's worth it to keep it, and other times, they give you a good trade. We get better trades, I think, on our John Deere mowers than we do on these other brands, but we'll wait and see.
Sure.
We'd like to net out at least that 20, at the minimum.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-29?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Joel, second. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7I, amend fee schedule, campground slash arena.
Now, one of the items of discussion at the park board last night was to consider the campground rates for 2022, and then also to look at dry floor events and have some discussion about handling the dry floor event rates at the arena. So they did make a recommendation for the campground, this is 2022 rates. They're recommending Friday and Saturday nights go from $35 to $40 a night. Sunday through Thursday nights go from $30 to $35, and then tents go from 15 to 20. So that was their recommending on the campground for 2022. And then the arena dry floor events, they're recommending increasing the deposit to $500 to allow for excess cleaning, because we're finding that there's many hours that are used in the floor scrubber after the events. And we do have a smaller, a smaller deposit that sometimes we retain if we have excess hours. And so they're recommending to increase the deposit to $500 from the $250 to be able to retain that if there's excess cleaning. There's a certain amount we expect to do, it's the overage that we want to be able to try to recoup some of that. And then they're also recommending a 20% discount for nonprofits on that dry floor rate. So we have a few amendments here to the, to the agreement, the campground, the deposit for the arena, and then the nonprofit discount. And so we're looking to approve those amendments to the fee schedule as recommended by the park board.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Did we already have a nonprofit discount, or none at all?
Not in the arena.
Okay.
We didn't have one, and we have them for everything else except for the arena, for some reason.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the amendments to the fee schedule? Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7J, approve resolution 2021-30, concrete for Challenge Park.
So we did obtain quotes for the installation of the concrete curbing around the perimeter of the new Challenge Park to be installed in the splash pad. We actually tried to get them from about five contractors, but only two responded with quotes. We have A&amp;H Concrete for $6,149, and Boining Masonry for $7,500, and that'll be installed prior to the installation company. And what this curb is, it's like an ad-grade curbing that we put in, so like the natural grass and sod comes up to it on this side, and then artificial turf butts up to it on the other side, so you could actually roll over it with a wheelchair if you wanted to. So that's kind of the idea, it's almost like a narrow sidewalk in the ground to set that perimeter. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve resolution 2021-30, accepting the quote for the Challenge Park concrete project.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-30?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joel.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Can I take that as for the low bid for A&amp;H?
Yes.
Okay. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. 7K, approve resolution 2021-31, accepting bid for sale of excess equipment.
So the Public Works staff has been doing a lot of ongoing cleanup around... Uh, so the, the Public Works staff has been doing a lot of ongoing cleanup around the city's buildings and grounds. We did offer for sale some excess chain-link fencing, gates and panels. Advertised all well-used, and if you saw it, they were all well-used. And so we did get a bid for $890 from Chad Curry through MinBid. So we're looking to approve resolution 20, uh, 2021-31, accepting that bid. And then we will have some smaller items that have since sold for the next agenda. Um, like, we'd rather have people get use, use out of them than, than take them to the Ken's Iron, I guess, is what I want to say. So we're looking for that resolution 21-31.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-31?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven L, authorized adjustment for seasonal pay rates.
So we, we have advertised for summer seasonal work, which now we have been able to fill, but we, but our issue is more, more in the wintertime up at the arena to get someone to fill those hours. And so as an incentive to attract applicants, the staff has recommended that we consider offering that position to start at a higher step than step one. And so the park board, uh, met last night, and they are recommending that we start the arena seasonal at step five, which is, I think, $15.10 an hour. Um, because what they'll do is they'll come up and work maybe three or four hours after work at their regular job, and, and we're having people not wanting to do that. So I guess we're kind of stuck in that, having a hard time finding employees. So what we'd like to do, um, as we move into the fall season, is be able to offer the arena step, the first step at the arena to actually be step five. So that's their recommendation. I guess I don't, I just kind of need general consent at this point, so we know going into advertisement of what to expect. But I wanted you to be aware that the park board is making that recommendation.
Okay. Questions, concerns? General consensus then to proceed with that recommendation? Okay. Seven M, approve scope of work for land acquisition airport.
The airport master plan, as you know, it proposed to refurbish the turf runway and slide it to the south, which also includes land acquisition of property in the runway protection zone and safety zone A, which is across 186. And so this requires an environmental assessment completed before we can get into the land acquisition phase. So we do have a work order to complete the project, I've attached it to you, with you. The total cost of it is actually $70,000, the city share is $3,500. Because we only, with the FAA funding and the MINDOT funding, our share has dropped to $3,500. And once this environmental assessment is done, then we can start looking at the land acquisition phase of it. And once we get into that phase, then we can negotiate with the property owner, and we can do it in a month, or we can do it in two years, kind of trying to work with the property owner on, on timing. And so to get the environmental assessment out of the way first is, is what we, um, what our engineer is actually recommending that we do. And MINDOT and FAA have agreed to allow us to proceed to this step and the land acquisition, even though we're not in the position yet of moving the turf runway, because we have to have justification with landings and takeoffs to take that step. But they said this needs to be done anyway, so they approved it. So we're looking to approve work order number nine with Bolton and Mink for the environmental assessment for land acquisition.
Questions, concerns?
So the city portion is 35, or on the back page of the letter it says, uh, zero?
Pardon me?
On the back page of the letter, it said the city share is zero.
Well, they did say that because with the CARES money, or the COVID money that came down, they have in there that the FAA will do 100%. But depending on when we get it completed, it could go back to the 5%, depending on when they put an expiration date on this. So right now, it's my understanding that that has to be spent by 2024, but the, um, the guidance from the US Treasury is slow to come out. So the 3,500 is kind of our worst-case scenario.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve work order number nine?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven N, approve resolution 2021-34, authorizing bids for storm shelter.
So the campground shelter, um, it was completed, you do have it in front of you tonight. Some of the features, uh, the storm shelter capacity meets the campground capacity guidelines for a storm shelter, and that takes into consideration the common area inside the bathroom and the storm shelter itself. So we do meet those minimum requirements. All the plumbing is in the two-by-six interior walls, which will be very good for future maintenance. Uh, there's two restrooms, uh, both the men's and the women's are actually accessible from inside the shelter. And the reason they're set up that way is because it's built into a hill, don't have necessarily outside walls to access. A women has three restroom stalls, the men has a stall and two urinals. Every has two sinks, they'll have mirrors, GFI outlets. Uh, the exterior is split-faced block, where we're exposed with possible separate colored ribbon, and that updated one you have kind of shows that there's an alternate color in there, kind of to break up that. Um, the roof is span creed with a usable roof area with perimeter fencing, so we can use the top of the roof for shuffleboard or picnic tables or whatever we want to put up there. Uh, the stormproof door, and then we'll have a screen door at, at as well. And then also stormproof windows in the common area, and then small stormproof windows in each restroom. So, and I have that all laid out, so this is kind of our final design that the park board looked at last night. And, um, with your blessing, they'd like us to approve that final plan and then authorize us to go out for bids. It is our recommendation that we let the bids sit out there for a longer period of time than we normally would, simply because there's so many pieces to this project for a general contractor to pull together. So our estimation of construction would be after Labor Day. This isn't something we want to get done this year. So we would like to start after Labor Day and have it for 2022 camping season. So I guess what we're looking for tonight is just to move forward with approving that and authorizing us to go out for bids.
Okay. Questions, comments?
And actually, I had it as 2021-34, but I see that, uh, that resolution didn't make it in the packet.
I noticed that.
But it's 2021-34, authorizing, approving the plans and authorizing the bids.
Park board reviewed this last night, I didn't hear any changes.
Nope, they were good with it.
So everything was fine. Just for your information. Do I have a motion to proceed with going out for bids on the bathroom, on the campground shelter?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make, I'll second it.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven O, approve SCDP agreement Sprinkle of Joy.
So Amy Pepping at Sprinkle of Joy, she submitted an application for an SCDP grant slash loan. The EDA received the application and they recommend its approval. Uh, the SCD program is part of the grant that we received in 2006 for $1.185 million, which we'd give money out to businesses, some of that's been paid back, and now we're remoneying it out. So it's kind of a revolving situation. Um, the project at 316 and 318 Main Street, the project to include the installation of insulation, fire protection and updated electrical work. Payments for the costs are divided between the applicant and the city. Uh, the owner would pay 30%, and then 30% would be paid by the city as a zero-interest deferred loan, which means zero interest, and you'd never pay it back until you sell the building. And then 40% is paid by the city as a loan, but over, over a 10-year period, it converts to a grant and then is never paid back. Um, I did include the construction costs of tri-county form insulation for the spray insulation and the thermal barrier, and Essler Electric for the electrical deficiencies. The total cost of the project is $30,518. The owner would pay $9,155.40, the city would pay the balance in that 30%, 40% split, so you can see how that would work. So what we're looking for the, tonight, and the EDA recommends that we approve the SCDP loan agreement with Sprinkle of Joy.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Sprinkle of Joy?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Shallen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, conditional use permit.
So we have the conditional use permit for the golf course apartments. Uh, we did provide a developer agreement to the developer for review, and I've since met with him and gone over every item in detail. Uh, we did send a notification that we're going to utilize our option for a 60-day extension to take action on this project, simply because we don't have, uh, an agreement in front of us. If the agreement is not complete within that 60 days, we have the option to request in writing an additional 60 days from the applicant. If we don't get that, then our other options are to approve it or deny it. Because once that 60 days lapses, it's automatically approved if we don't take action. So at that point, if we don't have what we need, we really have no choice but to deny it and then start over. So we're hoping that, um, we get all the information that we need to either approve it or if he decides to move forward. So people are asking a lot about where it's at at the golf course. Um, he emailed me yesterday requesting more time. So it's, um, we're not slowing it down. It's that, it's just a lot of details that need to be worked out. Um, the second item of unfinished business is the industrial park storm pond. And we are scheduling a meeting with the operations committee and staff and Sock Center opportunities. They're meeting Monday, this coming Monday. So it's Monday that they're going to pick the two people that are coming and meet with us, and that'll be Shallen and Diane and Ben and myself. And we'll sit down and talk to them about, um, a response to the letter that they had given us that I passed out last month, and then exactly how we go forward about the pond, if, if anything. At least we just need to talk and sit down in the same room and, and work through it. And then the next three items, I'm going to give to Chuck to kind of upgrade or update you on what's happening with those projects.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for those three projects, or updates on those projects, um, for the interpretive center site, we sent in the plating, uh, to the city, I think it was today. Uh, that'll be on the planning commission next week. Uh, for the utility, preliminary utility plan, we just wrapped it up recently and still working on some final touches on the preliminary grading plan. Uh, hoping to have that wrapped up next week and send to the city for review. For the south industrial park site, we got started on the survey, topo survey this week. We'll be using drone or UAV to gather a lot of that data out there, save some time. So we'll probably need maybe a week or two to get that data and then start on preliminary utility design for that plating. For the second street project, we're about halfway through with the topo survey. Uh, still about a couple of weeks left to gather all that data. Uh, currently working on a feasibility report. We'll put, get more of that going once we get the data in for the survey. And currently out for RFPs for a geotechnical report and solidariums for, for that project. And then for the 2020 CFP project, I'll just throw in here, if there's any, uh, questions from the public on what that's looking like this spring, we'll likely get some, uh, punchless item repairs going in the next month or so, and final paving likely in June.
Okay. Council, have any questions, concerns on those items? Okay, thank you, Chuck. We have no new business. Brings us to our consent agenda. We have scheduled claims, unpaid claims of $59,971.39 for a total of the same. We have resolution number 2021-32, accepting contributions. Uh, $123.92 from the men's card playing group to be allocated to the senior center. Uh, Valentine cookies from Eagle's Healing Nest to be allocated to the ambulance department. A thousand dollars from Black Oak Wind LLC to be allocated to the fire department. $3,000 from the Sock Center Conservation Club to be allocated to the park department for the dock. Uh, $2,000 from the Big Sock Lake Association to be allocated to the park department to go toward the dock also. And on behalf of the city and the council, I want to thank those groups for their contributions. Uh, we have resolution 21-33, approving an off-site gambling permit for the community connection of Sock Center. The permit would allow for a raffle to be held on August 20th, 2021 at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. Is there any questions or concerns with the consent calendar? If not, uh, looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items?
I have a few informational items for you. I do have in there an Arbor Day proclamation, because we are a tree city. And so one of the things that we do is declare Arbor Day every day, every year, and we, uh, encourage people to plant trees. And that's really, as, as a tree city, that's what we want to do. Um, another thing, remind you, remind you, the Board of Review and Equalization is Monday, April 12th to 1:00 to 1:30. You can actually call into that, or you can come here, um, either way, just let me know. And the actual county assessor, they're still not doing in-person meetings, so he'll be calling in on the phone. So if you want to call in and be a part of that, that's, that's fine. Otherwise, you can be here, be on speakerphone with the, with the county assessor. Um, cleanup day, May 22nd, from 8:00 to noon at the Civic Arena. And you have that in your packet, and then the additional thing is the hazardous waste is June 16th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Civic Arena. So we have a few opportunities for people to clean up, and then also to remind everybody that you do have the brush and compost site. So please don't burn your leaves and, um, don't throw your brush in, in the ditch. I guess those are the two things that we find. So these are just information-only items.
Okay, any questions or concerns over those items? Okay. We now have a closed session on the agenda for an attorney-client privileged discussion in relation to threatened litigation. Uh, so I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Okay, we've concluded our closed session based on our attorney-client privilege discussion, and we have reached the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.